Motion by Councilmember Oliver Second, by Councilmember Lauter. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We did have an announced delegation scheduled. They will not be coming tonight, so we do not have an announced delegation time. Moving on to administrative reports. Update on the 2020 census. Jay Wallace is going to give us that update.
Do we have any unannounced delegations?
Not to that, no.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a very short update tonight about the 2020 census and where we're at with everything. We're going to start off with basically how we did in the 2020 census. This is both the self-response rate and the non-response follow-up completion. So take note that the non-response follow-up completion was 99.9% accounted for. So the census takers went out after people self-responded to follow them for the people that did not respond, and were 99.9% complete with that. However, take note of where we are with all the other municipalities in Stanley County, as well as Stanley County itself in North Carolina. We came in at 62.8% overall response rate. That is for self-response. Overall, I'm not too surprised, given the cards that we were dealt with COVID-19 and going out and trying to interact with the citizens and everything. But we're sitting right about with average with just about everybody else in the county and with the state. This is just a snapshot of basically what how census tracts performed inside the city and also immediately around the city. The darker blue areas are ones that performed higher, and then the lighter blue and also kind of beige colored is where census tracts are that did not perform as well, mainly those hard to count areas. What is next? So obviously, the counting is completely over by now. It ended at the end of the year. By April 30th, 2021, the Census Bureau will deliver population counts used for apportionment to the President as required by law. Typically, this is delivered by December for the decennial census. We're a few months off with all the COVID-19 delays that happened. September 30th, 2021, is when the Census Bureau will send redistricting counts to the states. Again, typically, we receive this data by February or March, so we should already have that data in hand, but we do not have it, and we likely won't have it until about September. And then, once we receive that, once we receive the data, the determination will be made whether redistricting is necessary or not. You've probably noticed by now that I dropped off this paper at your desk shortly before the meeting. This is the update from the lead of municipalities about the delays of the census and how it's going to affect the redistricting of election districts. So if you want to take a read of that after the meeting, that would be good, kind of stay in touch with everything. The data released itself. The 2020 census data is significantly delayed due to COVID-19 delays in the counting operations in 2020. Data is typically released before the end of February, but the states and municipalities will not receive it until September this year. This will cause hardship on municipalities with true electoral districts and odd-year election years, as data is used to redraw local electoral districts. Currently, the State Board of Elections is proposing to the General Assembly that all municipal elections will be moved to 2022. This is a blanket solution, is what they what they made mention of, even for municipalities and boards that do not get elected by electoral districts, if that makes any sense. Redistricting. Census data will allow us to visualize where the city has seen an increase or decrease in population. All local election districts must be within 5% margin of population difference. So when we receive that data, we'll see what population increase or decrease has been made inside those districts, and then if we need to make any changes, we'll balance all things out. If all of our election districts remain within that 5% margin, we may not have to redistrict. If we end up having to redistrict, that process will begin upon the receipt of the data. I put a note that it could be sooner than September, because there's a lot of things still very much up in the air. We could receive the data in two months. We could receive the data by September. It's really unknown at this point. And I always like to put this in privacy and confidentiality, all responses, the census are protected under Title 13 of the U.S. Code. I also want to make a mention that since the census was performed online this year, the data is a lot more precise than what it ever used to be. So I mention that because they are talking about restricting data even further, because they're able to take that data and within the 85 percentile endpoint where that data came from. So they're putting some provisions in place to kind of make more data more restricted for those that are using it. But hopefully, we'll still get the data that goes down to the block route, which basically taser tailors it inside the city, so that we'll be able to leverage it for any redistricting that we need to do. That's pretty much all I have for tonight. I'd love to entertain any questions if you have them, but everything is still pretty much up in the air at this point.
Josh, do you have any questions?
I just would like to publicly thank Jay, because he has taken it whenever he was given this responsibility pre-COVID. Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID.
We had it. You, along with the district folks, had a plan of action on how it was going to be obtained. Like everything else, it had to go with the flow. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. And I appreciate that sentiment, because we did have a pretty big action plan. We had a couple of complete count committees. We partnered up with the local churches and other groups of people, and everyone was all gung-ho about it, and then things kind of fell apart. So I appreciate that.
And I mean, I saw him at things at opportunities within the city.
Unknown participant is now joining.
After hours, and just you were a lot of places trying to capture people. So thank you very much.
Any further questions? Jay, thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Number six, your municipal calendar is in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions?
Mayor, if I may ask, I noticed on my calendar for June, it looks like we have two scheduled council meetings. I know in years past, I think we went one weekend in June, July, August.
That will be a council decision, if you wish to do that again this year. Council, any thoughts?
Motion, we do that.
If you're looking to look forward, let us bring you some dates back. We need to, we need, what we did in the past is spread it out, so we met like every three weeks. And then on the schedule, we. Council, if you're in agreement to do that, we'll bring the dates back to the council at another meeting. Council, let's just have a straw poll. Are you interested in doing it?
Yes.
Okay. We'll bring, we'll bring the dates back to us. We can always add a special one.
I think, I think it's worth that reminder.
June, July, and August, like we did last year.
Yep.
We'll bring the dates back. Moving on to the consent agenda. Number seven, we need to set a public hearing to consider a performance incentive agreement for Project Rider, and that will be March 15th. Number eight, you have a resolution, resolution to support increased funding for road needs in your agenda. That is to request our representatives and our senator to help fund cities either in a new funding method or increase power bill funding, so we can do more with our roads.
And do you know, Mayor, is this the same thing? Are we asking other municipalities to do the same thing as this?
No, this, this is not the other request to municipalities. We're going to be talking about that at upcoming conference.
Oh, so we're not, okay.
Number nine is ordinance 2107 to eliminate parking restrictions on the south side of PD Avenue between Fifth Street and East Main Street. If you see in your, in your agenda, staff has estimated we mark the side next to Lily Mill, we can get approximately 14 spaces on that side of the road. Number 10, 2108 ordinance, land budget amendments and project closeouts. Anyone has any questions on that? We can pull it out, and Michael can explain it, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory. They were closing out a project grant, grant that we had, and along and moving some money around in that budget. Number 11, ordinance 2109, revision to approved residential ordinances. You saw a couple of changes that staff recommended we make that were in era and a previous change that we needed to amend. Number 12, consider road closure requests for a special event permit. And also, number 13, consider road closure for Tiffany's at the boardroom Cruisin's. Council have any desires to pull anything off, or you want to pick it all at once?
Where is the Cruisin's?
Cruisin's, they usually do on First Street, on Main Street, between First and Second. It's in front of the boardroom restaurant, is where she usually does it. And she has to get DOT approval to do it, because that's a state maintained street.
Look on through for sound agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Oliver Second, by Councilmember Whitely to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving into new business. Number 14, pavement maintenance for fiscal year 2021. You have a list of streets in there that is recommended by staff of what we need to do for them this year. If they don't, we'll need to report, Ross is in the back, not. We'll move forward with motion. Motion by Councilmember Drive. Seconded by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, the charters of freedom information is in your agenda, especially for purchasing bricks for the monument when it goes out front. Right now, we are sort of in a holding pattern, as the contractor is waiting to meet with the West Stanley Bricklaying Class as to when they will start laying bricks. Weather has been a real holdup on this entire project, so hopefully, we'll get it moving as the weather is getting better. Ms. Howard, you have anything to include on that?
We are going to do an in-person meeting. We're going to have an in-person meeting on Wednesday, March 17th, here in the Ray Allen Room, that morning for the local committee. I just would encourage folks to do a brick, and also encourage folks, if there's something that needs to go, or you want or think needs to go in the time capsule, that we really put some time and effort into that, because whenever we finally get a date for a dedication, it will be on then to pull things together, and I don't want to be scurrying around, so.
Question?
Yeah.
Looking at the stuff I got when they were out front, where are we? Are we going to do the donor's plaque? Is that what we've been taking care of?
The donor's, donor's plaque, they will do, okay? The charters of freedom will do for folks who make certain, who meet those qualifications, okay? And they also mentioned that, for instance, they're going to put on something West Stanley Bricklaying Class, because they would have given, but they have kept a list of folks and companies who have done something. So charters of freedom will take and put care of that. The only thing that we need to do individually, or if we decide to do something collectively, is to fill out that brick form, or whatever, or make any other donation. You know, if you look at the pictures that we have seen of what's going to be out there, we don't have any seats yet, okay? Ours is just strictly the presentation itself. After that is done, there will be all kinds, you know, I can foresee a seat out there, I mean, one of the metal benches or something that somebody could donate, but there's a lot of, but for, they are taking care of all of the donors, the donors and that kind of thing. But any money is accepted, any in-kind is accepted. There have been some companies here that have given some in-kind, in-kind donations, or are going to give some in-kind.
Is there a list of those companies or individuals? I'd like to see that.
Okay. I will make sure that we get that.
Road comments? Looking at the pads. They have finally, the weather finally cleared up enough for the pads, and the pads are forward. Next thing we'll, they actually be making the pawns to get ready to do the brickwork and all, so it's got to get dried up, so they can make their next set of pawns. Moving on, number 16, an update on the Food Truck Friday and other special events. Ms. Kaiser, are you doing this one?
So as you know, that I wanted to first start out and say that we have a great committee, and they have lots of ideas, and we are whittling those ideas down and coming up with a good calendar of events. So Food Truck Fridays start this Friday at City Lake Park, and they will go from March through October, most on the first Friday, but if there is a holiday that falls on that first Friday, then it would be the next Friday. For example, Easter falls on the first Friday. We're off on Good Friday on April 2nd, so we'll have it on April 9th. So our first Food Truck Friday will have, I think Cindy in my office, Cindy Burris in my office, has scheduled at least six right now, food trucks, six to eight. And we will also show the movie A Good Dinosaur, which is a good family movie. So then April, we will, so April 9th will be the next Food Friday, and Too Much Sylvia, the band, will be coming out to play. So I just sent out an email today with the minutes and action items for our next meeting, so we'll look at doing more music and other entertainment, along with those Food Fridays. So our next big event downtown will be, we're going to partner with Tiffany in May, on May the 8th. And so we'll be a part of her, and that will be her car show. So I've already booked a band for that event, Right Turn Claude, and we're working on kids' activities, Mother's Day crafts, vendors to go along with that event.
And when the restrictions have been lifted, hopefully, we will have no problem doing the separation and the mask and everything to pretend.
Absolutely. So everything is still within those COVID guidelines, but as we saw last fall, that we were able to successfully do those Food Truck Fridays with no issue, and, I mean, there's lots of space out at City Lake Park.
And I encourage council, as you see this come across our city social media, to share that and get the word out. So it was very well attended last year, and I'd like to see that again this year. People are looking for something to do, and that's a good event to come out and not have any problem with social distancing and get your food and go somewhere around there to eat, or either take it with you or walk.
And then I'd also like to add that at the next meeting, that I'll be bringing dates to you for the Christmas parade and the Christmas event, so we can go ahead and start planning those. And so we want this 2021, we've come out of 2020 and COVID, and we want it to be a really big special event year for us.
Thank you very much.
So with Lisa up here, I'm going to tell you that we are soliciting, we are soliciting donations, financial donations, from anybody that would company-wise like to help us get Too Much Sylvia paid for the 9th of April. When we talk with them, you have to realize, the governor, the governor hadn't lifted things yet, and we, the City of Alamo, are always in the same situation as every other municipality. People were afraid to do things, because if you make the commitment and pay the down payment, you may get stuck with it or not, you know, or lose it. New Orleans, for instance, has canceled their big event that they do annually, Arbor Day. So they have canceled it, and this, you know, they canceled it last year. They canceled it about the end of January, I think, is when I saw that. So, you know, if we do this just by donations, it's, it's a lot more cost-effective. So if anybody would like to come up, and anybody that's listening to this, please find me, see me, and we would love to have some big signs out front that says, "Music provided by," or, you know, donations by these particular organizations.
And to piggyback on that, not only for the Too Much Sylvia, but for any of our events, we can make them bigger and better with this sponsorship. So the city puts in so much money, it would be great to have sponsorships for anyone, and we will, we will actually, we will advertise this sponsorship heavily. And one more shameless plug, I don't know if you saw on Facebook, but we have a new playground out at Tuck Moorhead Park. It should be open at the end of this week, so we're waiting on the border and the mulch right now, and once we get that in, it's going to be ready to go.
It looks great already.
Yeah, it does. So as you know, I've asked for this for four years, so it's kind of exciting to get that.
Thank you very much, and thank you to your entire committee, because I know it's a hard job to work this out, especially at this COVID time of year. Number 17, information to King Alleyway. You have in your agenda, or Mr. Perez has updated you, we are waiting on the utility poles to come in, the directorate poles, like we use downtown, and we're waiting on them to come in, and it's going to take a little while to get those in. Michael, I saw where you're hoping to get a design within the next week or so, and you can share that with council, but as we get the design, while we're waiting on the poles, will we be able to go ahead and put the underground wires in and set the cement pads for them poles and move on with our paving, rather than waiting all the way to the end of spring to do any of that?
Mayor, that's a good question, and I'm not on the committee for the alleyway, so the comments you see in there are Ms. Hardy's, so I can't answer that question, but I can find out and then let you all know. I know, one thing, when she and I have talked, there's been updates, you know, we have talked about seeing what we could do, move along with to a point where we're not going too far, where we'd have to undo something or cause problems for, you know, later on in the project. So I know that is a goal of the committees, to try to do some of those things, so that they can get them done, have them ready, so the next step can move on. But I'll ask, and I can report back on that particular question.
Just to refresh my memory, what we paved, like that all the way from Main Street, all the way to King?
Yes.
All the way around. We'll pave the avenue. There's not a member of council on that committee? No, that's, that's a standard.
And, and the reason I wanted to ask that it be put on here is because we hadn't had a lot done on it, and then I realized that we had changed people that were in charge of it. And Nikki is in charge of it now, and I feel, I mean, she's, I think we'll move forward. Because if we think about it, we've been working on this for four years, at least three years, right, Ross? Haven't we been talking? Because when Christina.
Been talking about it.
Well, Christina, I remember it was, Christina was talking about it when she was here, and I can't tell you how long ago that was.
Just to, just to give a quick update, we have hired an architectural firm to help design this placemaking area. So until we get our designs back, there's really not a whole lot of work that can start until we get those designs back. The poles have been ordered. Again, the update was in there on when that delivery time could be, they're having to be manufactured, but until we get the architectural site plans, we're really not planning on doing any starting anytime soon, until we get that in our hands, and then we can phase out our scope work.
It says in here that you're expecting that this week. Is that still true?
That's, Nikki's been coordinating with that.
Thank you.
Mayor, one question, one thing I've noticed on that, that the paving looks really nice on that alleyway, but if you're right behind, if you're on First Street, right behind the home shop, I run through there quite a bit, and there's, I think we need to maybe consider putting either a sign or something, because I don't want to have, I don't want somebody to come out from the alleyway there and run to that, you know, sidewalk area, maybe, yes, I want a speed bump, or if we put a, one of those mirrors. I'm not sure what we could do to make sure that anybody walking along there doesn't clog the vehicles up. Have we talked about that, or anybody?
We can look at it, but that's private property, so we would need to look at it and then ask the property owner. We can, we can check, see what property owner will be allowing to do.
What does a pole cost us with the labor and all of that? It seems like this is the place everybody goes to get a pole.
Are you talking, utility pole?
Yes.
Or a sign pole?
Pole.
It all depends on the size. We have like three or four different sizes, so it depends on that. Michael, can you give me a range?
Are we talking about for a regular utility pole? Are we talking about for a decorative?
I think that's what you said.
Okay.
Are you talking about the decorative pole?
No, not utility pole.
Utility pole, $268.
Yeah. So 30-foot pole is $141, and a 50-foot pole is $517, and there are varying sizes in between. I had that information ready because of the request of number, item number four on the agenda, which we're going to hold over, but they vary from the smallest size, 30-foot, $141, to the largest size that we utilize, $517.
Well, the people expect you to give them to them and put them up, right?
We've had the request from time to time, ma'am.
Sure.
We've had that request from time to time. You're correct.
Yeah.
Come around the table, Ms. Hughes.
Comment?
Mr. Perez.
Just want to let everyone know that we have been notified by the state that we received our electric vehicle charging station grant. So we received $20,000. Each will have two station locations, but each physical setup has two different charging ports, so we're able to receive $5,000 per port. So we'll have a setup with two ports in the City Hall parking lot, and then another setup in the police station parking lot down on East South Street. So from this point forward, we have 100, well, at some point in their future, once we confirm that we're going to accept it, we have 180 days for the grant funding to get it installed, which shouldn't be a problem.
Well, I was doing it to $5,000 per, I didn't realize it was going to be per port.
Yeah, I didn't either. I read it, and I think I even shared initially some of the grant guidelines, and it said per station, but it did not specify that was, you know, that station would be at two, you could receive $10,000 funding.
Any further, Mr. Perez?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Howard? Just a couple things to really, I saw the park building, and the city's impressed on the Alamo Hotel, the construction is getting ready, that's, that's a very plastic thing. I think it's going to happen for, for our downtown, and also, right by the old Alamo Hardware, seeing the improvements and the progress being made on that, but I don't think it's, I think it's, those are two very, very important structures that are going to raise some revitalization downtown, so I'm excited about that.
I didn't really have anything, other than to piggyback on what Will said. I got out, sat in there and looked around a little bit, and looked at some of the things that are going on. It's, there's a lot going on. Got to look around, a lot of small things, like random ejects and stairs on the backs of buildings and houses, plus it's downtown. It's a lot of dumpsters sitting in houses to tell stuff to be done and remodeled. So I think that's continuing, but sort of under the rail. And then Alamo Hotel, Alamo Hardware, those types of large projects that you see, around some of the back streets, there's a lot of small things that are going on, like charging stations and those kind of things. Going to be a lot of activity, I believe, in downtown area and I started. Ms. Howard?
Thank you.
Mr. Perez?
Sorry you're not here tonight, but hopefully, you and your family will have a moderate deal with COVID here. We're all thanking all of you.
Ms. Howard?
I just appreciate Ross and two things. I can't even tell you what day it was. It was either Thursday or Friday of last week. If y'all remember last meeting, Ross came with Keep Stanley County Beautiful, about encouraging us to, to really take, take it upon ourselves to clean our streets or clean the roads where we live, et cetera, et cetera. Well, Ross takes that to heart, because it was not great weather, but one of his daughters was out cleaning Snug's Park Road, Snug's Park Road, wasn't it? Snug's Park Road, one afternoon, and she said, yes, she told her dad that she didn't have anything else to do, and so that was what she was doing. So thanks for raising good kids.
Cheap labor.
Cheap labor, I got you. And the other thing is, is that, Ross, I knew that tonight, one of the items that we had in the consent agenda had to do with parking, and I have been spending some time on a pretty, pretty regular basis down at the Pfeiffer campus, because of some projects that I'm just having, doing down there, and parking became, was a big issue. So Nikki and, I think Nikki is going to get up with the folks down there and get a map to them, so that they will know where parking is actually available. And I think the same day I was talking to Nikki was the day that, the day after she, I think, and Ross had met about the PD Avenue. If you, if you saw the drawings, they have 14 through there will help, but then you think about the possible parking that we have on that piece of property that we own off of PD. Once that's finished, the parking will be great, so. Granted, we're good right now with the 90 students, but come August, there's going to be another group, and then come January, there's yet going to be another group.
So, um, we are about to be inundated.
Okay, I entertain a motion that we go into closed session, refer to the North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811, A1, 3, and 6, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential, consult with attorney and personnel. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Sack, for the rest of the two to get in.
You can carry it. And the contents, say your reading contents. Thank you.
I took a penny.
I entertain a motion that we appoint Councilmember Hughes as the clerk for the session for the closing. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Come out of closed session, I'll entertain a motion, reference to our attorney, performance evaluation and annual salary, that we give her a 2% raise.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, and second by Councilmember Louder, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Anything else, counsel?
Was the camera on just then?
I'm assuming it is.
Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to our next regular scheduling meeting, March 15th to 6:00. Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.